Allegiance.
And begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would just like to say on behalf of the city council, we wish everybody in Avalon and around the world a very safe and happy 4th of July, even though they don't celebrate our Independence Day around the world. You may be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember De La Rosa?
Here.
Councilmember Ponce?
Here.
Councilmember Schickling?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim LaVell?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here. Announcements and written communications?
I have none.
Okay. Department head reports. I have none. Okay, go ahead.
Department heads?
Oh, department heads. I love the look he gives me when I make those silly faux pas. Okay, department heads, I was all excited because we have a short meeting tonight, so I guess I'm trying to keep it short.
I'll keep it short. Happy New Year, City Council. Today's the first year of the new fiscal year. Reporting on revenues, April TOT was up 6.2%. That was driven by vacation rentals, which were up 10.6% compared to April of last year. Ad tax, use fees, and cross-channel were up 15% for the month. Easter fell later in the year, so what we saw is our March numbers tended to be down and our April numbers tended to be up, and I think a lot of it was driven by the timing of Easter and spring breaks. As a bit of a preview, nightly moorings for the month of May were down 2%, but up 8.6% in June. So a bit of a mixed bag. Unless there's any questions? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Who's next? I was in the sun too long today. Must have fried my brain a little bit.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. Jackie Cordero, Public Works Director. Summer is here for Public Works. The crew is still repainting, repainting street markings throughout town, pressure washing Front Street benches and parks. They're cleaning up Lover's Cove and Pebbley Road walkway. They installed new wiring and café lights at Front Street, City Park, and Kids Park. They helped community services with art installation, flags, taking down graduation banners. They also continue to work on the Sombrero Fountain and every morning sweeping, handpicking, and landscaping. Public Works and Harbor Maintenance also worked together to replace the Green Pier fiberglass doors. That was a nice added benefit there. The crew is still making progress with the Burma Guard rail and electrical and plumbing issues in the public showers. Coming up next, the crew will be installing the fuel tank door, painting crosswalks at the elbow, replacing palapa shades by Kony and the ATM, installing new barbecue grills at the Cana- at Canaby Park and City Park, and replacing ten benches on Front Street. Of course, in between all of these duties, the crew continues to repair leaks as they pop up any emergencies, like someone dropping a five-gallon paint on Saturday on Country Club Drive. There is probably four of us out there cleaning it up and doing traffic control, so it was a collective effort. I say this every week, but I really do mean it. The Public Works crew is amazing. They're small but mighty, and somehow they get everything done and then some. So again, if you see them out there, please thank them. Thank you.
Questions? No, thank you and thank them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff. Michael Allegria, Fire Chief, City of Avalon. In June, we had 119 calls, 58 EMS, 61 fire-related. This week, we have extra staffing for the 4th of July, and also, we're going to have Baywatch Catalina, who will be mostly in the boat to handle all the boat calls to keep the paramedics in town. And just want to remind everybody, all fireworks are illegal in the City of Avalon, even sparklers. If they're seen, please call, and myself or the deputies will come out and handle it. And then, as Jackie did, a shout-out to my crew. They did awesome teamwork with Catalina Island Medical Center, or CIH, and Baywatch. And even though we don't like to have this happen, they helped deliver a baby the other day because due to weather. Again, we want everyone to try and be on the mainland, just in case there's complications. But they all worked together and helped deliver a baby and shipped them off with Coast Guard about 6:30 in the morning. Thank you.
So what time do you want us to meet on Thursday to be, to get ready for the parade?
Thursday? How about Friday?
Friday. Well, I was going to be there early. I was going to be there real early.
Thursday, 6:00 AM. Thursday, 6:00 AM.
Yeah. No, Friday.
12 o'clock, but be there by 12.
Okay. So we're going to have the, are we having the news?
You be there at 11:30 because I hear we got to dress you up or something.
Are we going to take that, are we going to drive in that little thing, your new?
To be determined.
Okay, that would be awesome. But, okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Evening, Mayor, City Staff, City Council. Matthew King, the Sheriff's Captain, Avalon Station. For the month of June, we had 137 calls for service, and the deputies made 179 observations. There were 19 traffic stops and 14 pedestrian stops. There were four arrests, actually five arrests. There were two for battery, one for domestic violence, one for DUI, and one for assault with deadly weapon. For 4th of July, we have our full staff. Everyone's working that day, and no one has a day off, and we have one extra reserve we'll be working on Friday and for Saturday, and we'll be in the parade like every year. We're looking forward to it. Just to remind the public, you know, it's illegal to throw water balloons. Please refrain from doing that. We will be citing for that and also taking the water balloons from you if you do partake in that activity. Also, illegal fireworks. The LADA has made it very clear that he is prosecuting for any type of arrest for illegal fireworks. So if anything is not safe and sane, it's a felony, anything that is safe and sane in areas that can't use it, like Avalon, it's a misdemeanor. So please refrain from using the fireworks on the island. It's very dry, and like the chief said, you know, it's a, we're going to take it very serious and be out there enforcing it.
So no water balloons, but are the super-soakers still allowed or not?
Yeah, that's, it hasn't written into municipal code yet, but water balloons are not allowed. Super-soakers, we hope we don't do it, but it's not actually on the books.
Okay, and candy's still allowed, too? Because some people were complaining that they were getting hit hard with candy, so I'm just making sure. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Kevin Schmidt, Harbor Master. So I guess we'll start off with stats tonight. That's right here in front of me. For the month of June, we ended up with 1,475 boats arrived for a total of 5,301 mooring nights, which is about over a 3% increase from last June. So maybe small, but it's an increase, so we'll take that one every day. We also had a total of 262 service, calls for service since the last time we met, 12 Baywatch assists, seven emergency medical calls, 11 enforcement, and a total of 162 security patrols. Right now, in case anybody was questioning whether or not summer is here, take a look at the harbor. We're pretty, right now, we're pretty, pretty close to being sold out on the inside harbor. We got boats going out to Descanso and Hamilton. By this time tomorrow, I expect we will be, probably be sold out on the inside and the outside. So it's going to be very busy, obviously, with the 4th on Friday. We are upstaffed from now until Sunday, so we've got basically the most amount of human bodies that we can get out there as possible through the holiday weekend. We've talked to the guys and talked to the officers and made a point that the next three days, we're going to get the word out about water balloons and, you know, the things that we don't want hap- going on during the dinghy parade and everything else. So we're trying to get the message out early and, you know, let everybody know what we don't want to see happening on the 4th of July. The e-boat, hope to have that out tomorrow and the next day, actually in service and working, and so we're kind of excited about that, seeing how it actually plays out on the water and doing operations. And that's about it.
Excellent. Questions?
Questions? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor. 4th of July is finally here, so we have a few reminders for the public. July 3rd, we will have the USC Marching Band, the Spirit of Troy, will be performing on Wrigley Stage starting at 3:00 PM. This concert is presented to you by CRNR, the Catalina Hospitality Group, and the Yacht Club. We have posted on our website and all our social media outlets, as well as we will have some signs up tomorrow throughout town, that there will be no parking on St. Catherine's Way from Yacht Club to the casino from 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM on the 4th of July. Also, any personal properties such as chairs, towels, blankets, sheets, left out before 7:00 AM on the 4th of July along the parade route can and will be removed to be able to clean the front street. So place it at your own risk. This, the theme this year is Surfing in the USA, a celebration of Avalon's beach culture. The house decorating, decorating contest will be held at 10:00 AM, where judges will drive around Avalon and immediately be giving out the prizes to the homes. And then, golf cart contest will be held at Lower Descanso at 11:00 AM. From there, you can go out to the lineup, which starts at the casino from 12 to 12:30, with road closure at 12:45 sharp, with the parade starting at 1:00 PM. We will have a DJ playing from three to, after the parade. We will have a DJ playing from 3:00 to 5:00 with a special appearance from our very own children's dance program, Dance Tech, at 4:00 PM. Also at 4:00 PM, the Yacht Club Dinghy Parade will be starting. From there, we will have Eddie Hoffman and his band will be playing from 5:30 to 7:00, and then from 7:00 to about 8:30, we'll have Los Islaños be playing as well. Both bands will be playing more of that surfer-type of music, Beach Boys-style of music, and as well as start to rock a little bit more as the night goes on. Then the USC Marching Band will come back down to the stage from around 8:30 to close to 9:00 to lead us into the fireworks, and the fireworks show presented by Garden State Fireworks and Curtin Maritime will start at 9:00 PM. A couple of quick announcements. Just want to remind people that Latitude 33 still has the Avalon 4th of July Celebration shirts for sale, with portions of the profit going to offset the cost of the 4th of July. As well as the casinos having a 4th of July celebration with a concert within the ballroom with the USC Marching Band. Doors open at 6:00 PM and concerts at 7:15, and you can watch the fireworks from their balcony. It's just $30.50 per kid, or $35.50 for the adults, with $10 of every ticket going to offset the price of the 4th of July. Any questions? No?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots of good stuff.
Happy 4th.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jocelyn Francis, Assistant City Manager. Wanted to give a little bit of information on the Olens Cube, some stats for the month of June, now that we've completed a full month. The machine has accepted over 4,000 bottles and cans for the month of June, which is great. We have 67 unique users using the machine, and roughly $230 have been paid out for CRV redemption. So, very exciting. And then, right now, the city is going through a SB 1383 compliance audit through CalRecycle, so city staff are working on that, and they're reviewing documentation first, and they'll probably be coming onsite later in the summer or early fall. As it relates to the Pebbley Beach landfill project, we are confirmed the project will be presented at the LA County Solid Waste Regional Task Force in Alhambra on Thursday, July 17th, initially at their facility subcommittee at 11:00 AM, and a report out will be at their general task force meeting at 1:00 PM on that same date. So I'll be attending, as well as consultants I've been working with on the project through Rincon, Geologic &amp; Associates, and of course, CRNR. So just wanted to let everybody know I'll be there, and if they would like to attend, to let me know. And then, last week, we had LA County Regional Planning here on the island, and one of their county biologists, who did a project site walk over at the Pebbley Beach landfill for the capital project there. They had a, they took drone footage of the area. They're going to compare it to the biological constraints analysis that was done for the project. So things are moving along with the Pebbley Beach landfill. And then, for the month of June, some code enforcement stats I thought I'd share. They issued 175 citations, wrote 23 case reports for a variety of municipal code violations, issued 20 red tags for abandoned property and vehicles around the city, responded to six building code violations, issued two stop-work order notices, responded to 25 animal control calls for service, 10 public nuisance complaints were received on the online forum system that they responded to and investigated. They conducted two green bag and grease inspections for the 30-plus, you know, food service establishments that we have in the city preparing for summer, and assisted with 20 emergency calls for service, helping with traffic control on those, on those calls. And that's all I have. Great, thank you.
Just curious about the Olens Cube. Do we empty that out? Does Bonds empty it out? Does somebody come over from over town, or how does that work?
Yeah, so CRNR is the collecting entity on that, on that machine, so I really appreciate what they're, what they're doing with it. Unfortunately, there was a part, the owner actually of Olens was here on the island repairing it, and so I know that there's been a couple of days this month where it's not been, where it's been out of service. So the machine will show full when it's truly full, and it needs to be collected, but it will also show full when there's troubleshooting that's happening on the backend, and that's kind of just a notification that people know that, okay, I can't, it's not accepting my bottles and cans today. I highly recommend downloading the app, checking the app first, and if there's space, it should be functioning. If it's showing full, it either means that it's truly full, or there's some troubleshooting happening on the backend.
Okay, cool. Yeah, because I went to go use it just once, but it said full, so I was just curious. All right, thanks.
Yeah, so I, there's been some hiccups, like any new piece of new equipment and machinery, but I'm feeling positive and optimistic for the month of July, and I think we figured out those bugs, so.
Cool, I love it. I'm so glad it's here.
Yeah, thank you.
And for those people who don't know, there is that find button, which, that's the button that they hit to show if it's full or what's going on, and some people didn't know that. I also understand they're hiring a troubleshooter from here, so when it breaks down, it'll, this poor guy won't have, mark or whatever, and he won't have to come all the way over here. So that was, that was a smart, a good move as well.
Yes, Olens is hiring somebody on the island to help with the troubleshooting that can't be done remotely. Yeah.
Any questions? Good. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Council. Just real quick, on Olens, it also happened down there Saturday or Sunday, and somebody had tried to crunch up a gallon plastic jug and shove it in there, and obviously, that doesn't work, so it was stuck in there, but you can't even, once you removed it, it was still blocked out. So just, only the, only the cans and bottles that fit, you know, it's not, it's not built for the, the bigger ones, so. Just briefly, want to revisit, this June was our first full month with the tents on the beach regulations. So as we worked through this, I mean, code had a number of conversations with individuals that had tents out there. Most of them didn't, were not aware, and most of them, when code talked to them, were fully understanding, compliant, it wasn't a problem. We had, over this past weekend, I received a number of photographs of a series of four or five identical-looking tents that were at Step Beach. They were all the way to the back against the wall. They weren't blocking anybody's view. They weren't six feet high. Arguably, they were probably wider than six feet, which puts them in violation of regulations, but we're, we're trying to get people educated on it versus just issuing citations. So we are paying attention, and certainly, any that are blocking the lifeguard's view are being moved or removed.
Lifeguards weren't aware of, one of the lifeguards wasn't aware of this, but I don't even think we're putting it in their purview to, to say anything, right?
Well, part of the regulation in what we adopted was that it, they cannot block the lifeguard's views. The lifeguards do have authority on that, so we're, we're getting that information out. Like I said, we put the flyer out to every short-term rental, to every hotel. Talked with Dave Hart today. We're going to have signs made and posted out there. So our goal is to use this, you know, to try to educate versus just issue citations. So it, it looked pretty good, other than the specific area on Step Beach this weekend, this past weekend.
Well, I, again, as we discussed it, I thought our discussion was, they couldn't have sides on them, but if they were open, they were just the four things, that would be okay. But that's not what our, our code says.
No, they, they still have to be, they can't be closed on, you have to be able to see through them, but still, if they exceed six feet tall or six feet wide, or have the ropes extending from taking up more beach space, they're not, they're not allowed, simply because they're taking up too much, but we, we just don't have big enough beach space.
Because it says no canopies, but it doesn't say they're allowed to not, they're okay if they don't have sides. So that's what's a little bit confusing.
Right. It doesn't allow the canopies, just because they're canopies, correct. Also, on the June 18th, we had a planning commission meeting. This was the second part of the May-June Planning Commission meeting, where we identified, originally identified 95 properties that the city felt were subject to revocation, that either had a TRL license, were grandfathered in, or a CUP. We issued notices on those 95 properties after the two months of meetings. In total, 86 of those 95 were revoked. Nine were allowed to be cured for specific reasons, whether, and some of those nine were allowed to be cured because they either held a grandfathered or a CUP, but had a long-term tenant in there, and they have a lease, or they were prepared to file a lease with the city to maintain it. So we certainly wanted to encourage in long-term tenancies, so those were cured, and others that, that had a tenant and were operating as a short-term rental, but simply didn't meet certain, whether business license filing or up-to-date on their TOT, so those were. So overall, 86 of the 95 were revoked. We're still in the waiting period on appeals that could come to City Council. We're, as of now, looking at the June, or the July 15th meeting, two weeks from tonight, could be the night that we would have those, depending on how many we have. We'll, we're looking at a heavy agenda, so depending on the agenda, we'll try to balance that out. So great job by the Planning Commission. We really appreciate. It was a lot of information for them, because they had a separate resolution for each one of those 30-something properties that were before them in June to act on. So we appreciate all the time and effort they put in. And then finally, every, all the department heads that spoke tonight talked about, you know, whether it's Public Works or the Fire Department, Community Services, Harbor Department, I also want to recognize the Sheriff's Department as part of this, of what they're about to go through this weekend, and on Friday, they all put in so much work and work so hard and are going all day and into the night. So just a preemptive thank you to all of them. We appreciate, we appreciate them, because a lot of Public Works and Fire are taking time off and working those extra shifts and time away from family, so we appreciate that. So that's it, unless there's any questions.
The city attorney?
Oh, I have a question, I'm sorry. So since I was gone, I watched the, the both meetings, this one and the Planning Commission meeting, and so I'm, I'm curious, though. So the moratorium is supposed to be up at the end of July, right?
Right.
So how does that, we haven't, we haven't changed the ordinance yet, so is it still, I mean, Planning Commission still has to hold off on any requests until we actually change the ordinance, or what's the deal there?
Well, there's a couple of things. In two weeks, we, we will be bringing you some, some legislation to have some modifications to our existing. We're, we're not, we have a lot of good, what we consider good regulations on the books. Our issue has been enforcement of those, so we believe we have a solid system that we can put in place that would have a 24/7 call system in place for anybody to file a complaint against a violation, or, because that's when most of them happen, are on weekends and after hours. This is going to capture the, the bulk of those issues, and then we'll be able to capture in real time when those complaints are filed, and whether they're responding to them timely, and who the on-island representative is. The other issues, as we work through them, the regulations, we're going to bring those to you two weeks from tonight and start that discussion. Anything that the earliest somebody could be on an agenda in Planning Commission is August, their meet, their August meeting. It hasn't been decided yet of how we'll handle that, you know, with anybody that's on the waiting list right now, but we certainly anticipate that these new regulations will be in place before any of those August folks come on board, if.
Okay, so it sounds to me like what you're saying is the, the ordinance has to be done before the Planning Commission can go ahead and entertain any new ones, right?
Well, no, the moratorium will be lifted, so they can entertain new ones, but as far, whether they're new ones or old ones, they're all going to be subject to the new regulations. So if you have a short-term rental, these new regulations will apply to you regardless of if you're a new one or an old one. That doesn't change it.
Kind of weird to me. It seems, it, I, I, it seems to me that we just, I, I would like to have a finite ordinance in place before we move forward, but I guess that's discussion for another time?
Well, like I said, we have, we've talked about the number that we currently have on the books, short-term rentals. Now, this new ordinance is going to, whether they're new or old, it's going to apply to everybody that's operating as a short-term rental.
Right, but there's other issues that, that were entertained in the survey and everything that I haven't heard addressed yet, you know, like. that I haven't heard addressed yet, you know, like where are we with the cap? I mean, are we doing that? Are we eliminating it to a finite number? I mean, those kind of issues. I.
Well, we've had, we've had those discussions regarding the cap, and we asked council that we wanted to go through this revocation process, which we just went through, with the, with the understanding that coming out of that, uh, we would revoke those that were not operating or complying. And then we, we would ask at that point that we revisit annually, uh, the idea of a cap, because we still need to, as, as we go through these, determine there's, there's still some that are operating that are in compliance with the code and, and renting two or three nights a year. And that two or three nights a year is simply to keep the CUP alive, is our guess. Um, so, you know, those have a different impact than the ones that rent, you know, and we talked about these, those that are running 100-plus times a year. So, you know, we're, we're looking at trying to figure out what that cap could look like, because everyone doesn't, every one is not equal as far as having the same impact.
Sure.
Right? So, so now that we've re- removed these 86, we want to come back, continue to look at where we're at with the ones that are active and the ones that are impactful, um, before we talk about an overall city cap.
Right, but if we haven't come to a definite decision, I mean, I understand what we're doing and how we're getting to a number and all that kind of stuff, but if we haven't come to a definite decision on whether or not there's gonna be a cap, and if there is, what that number is, then if planning commission, if people go to the planning commission on the August meeting and say, okay, I want one, and they don't have, it's not in the new ordinance, anything about a cap, then they're gonna say, okay, approved. Maybe, I mean, you know, but, I mean, how does that, I, that, that doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Okay, well, we can certainly have as part of two weeks from tonight, if you want to discuss the cap, we can put that on the agenda.
Okay, and, and other things. I'm, I'm, I'm really super concerned about multiple investment owners. And I know that I've gotten a lot of pushback on that. They're like, well, people will go around it, you know, with LLCs and all that kind of stuff, you know, so. But I, I feel that if it's in the ordinance that you're only allowed one, then, you know, people, people do and will cheat, but I feel that it has to be in place, um, at least, so that we could have some teeth to say, no, you already have five. You can't have another one. Because the, we, we can't take away their five right now. That's gonna go away through attrition, but, you know, what's to prevent them from applying for another one? So I just feel that there's a lot more discussion about this, and I, I feel that it's like the moratorium came, the end came up really quickly without a lot of, uh, council, um, discussion, uh, about it.
Well, like I said, I mean, we, we did fully discuss this issue, and we fully discussed the cap issue a couple, a few, a number of meetings ago about that. I mean, we, we had that conversation.
Right, but it just seems to go to the planning commission, and I don't, I feel, I, I, maybe it's just me, I don't know. I, I kind of feel out of the loop on a lot of it. But, anyway, so yeah, agenda item.
Yep.
Thank you.
And let me ask though, correct, um, did we put in anything yet about whoever, they all have to be checked in by a person? They, whoever is checking them in, if it's the maid, then must have a business license as the property manager?
That's, that's part of what, yes. That's part of what we're adopting.
Okay.
Yep.
It hasn't been adopted yet, but, okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else, sir?
No, thank you.
The city attorney?
Yeah, I am here, and I will be on the island in two weeks to discuss, uh, the CUP ordinance, as well as, um, we have the issue of the, uh, the advance payment to the hospital, which will be on your agenda, and there's some other items as well. So it will be a heavy agenda, but I'll be there.
We look forward to seeing you. Okay, council member reports, and the mayor's gonna report nothing again.
I'll go first.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of things. I did do the handout of, uh, the basic of what went on with our policy committee meeting. Just wanted you all to have that. And then also, uh, city manager Dave Maestros was selected by the Rotary Club as its Citizen of the Year.
Wow.
Thank you, Roderick.
That's all.
Well, that's great news.
And the plaque is still sitting on his shelf.
Yes, and you, Councilwoman?
I don't have much either. I'm just heading over tomorrow for Contract Cities.
I don't have much either, cuz I was gone for a while, and that, that was pretty much my report out. I was, I watched that going, whoop. So, anyway.
I have a few things. Um, one, just wanted to relay a message from Jim Luhana Love Catalina, who said he was sorry he couldn't make it tonight, he's under the weather, but wanted to pass on his deep appreciation to the residents, second homeowners, mooring owners, and businesses who have generously supported this year's Fourth of July through donations and sponsorships, totaling so far about $30,000 as of today, with more payments still incoming. Happy, very happy Fourth of July from them. Um, and then, um, attended the Second Gateway Cities COG meeting and was re-elected to the Executive Committee for the COG. Thank you. Um, at that meeting, it was discussed, um, if the cities involved wanted to support a letter against SB 79, which is a law that basically allows, um, metro and/or transportation companies who own property to, um, not have to comply with local city ordinances in terms of building height or scope. Um, while we are not necessarily impacted directly here because of that, um, I think I would like to ask if there's consensus to be able to write a letter of support against that bill, um, in support of the other cities that are in the COG, if you guys would be okay with that.
And Cal Cities, um, was very, very.
Yeah, Cal Cities is driving the effort.
Yeah, so yeah, I would.
Yeah, it's, it's basically a support of local control, so that we can make decisions about our community, in our community. Um, and then, uh, Dave Hart and I will be attending the July 17th 88 for 28 meeting in LA, which is basically taking all 88 cities within LA County to support the initiatives behind the Olympics in 2028. Um, so hoping to both gain some info and context there, and be able to make sure that they know Avalon is on the map. Um, and then, just two things. One, I also watched the Planning Commission meeting, the most recent one. Um, and, um, there was a discussion after the votes about the methods of communication in how people were reached out to, and I think this is something we brought up a few times, of trying to kind of source out what is the best means of communication, and people having concerns about not receiving mail at their place on the island, or their place of residence, or what's on the tax rolls. And I was wondering, um, I was surprised because they kind of stopped at the end of the conversation, and I assumed we were going somewhere with it. Is it possible to bring the communication into this century with email and/or phone or text, market, text discussion, please? Um, it would seem to make sense, especially for households where perhaps a family with a trust has ownership, and there's multiple people involved in discussions and terminations with those houses. Um, if we can have all of their emails and have a proof of email that's sent, as opposed to, we sent the letter, but it wasn't certified, there was no, you know, return of address, there wasn't any, none of that. If there's a way that we can do that, and it perhaps increases the ability for us to say, we literally did everything we could to reach out to you. There's no room for excuse. But I wanted to ask what that cost looks like, what that time looks like for city staff, um, and if that can be discussed or changed.
Well, I can tell you on this last one, what we did is we complied with the communication requirements we currently have on the books, and because of the 95 that we had and the location, we ended up notifying every residence on the island. We had to send a ma- a mailing to every residence on the island, cuz when you go 300 feet from each one of those 90, it covered everybody.
Right.
So we notified everybody there, and that was obviously quite expensive. And then we used the address that they have on file, whether it's with their business license or their address with the accessory's office for tax purposes. Um, you know, some people brought up, well, can't you put it, you know, a notice on the door of the property? Well, as soon as we do that, the property owners that don't live here.
Right.
That own, enter, say, well, how would I have ever seen that? And so you're damned if you do, damned if you don't, but we certainly, and I agree with you, it'd be nice to get, uh, with the, with the additional tools that we have at our disposal now, and, and I can talk to Scott about what changes we would need to make to our code to allow for that.
Yeah.
Uh, as far as a notice, to be able to do that for notices.
I think it just, it makes sense in the way that people communicate these days, whether it is email or text or both, that that's much more likely to get responded to, much more likely to be seen immediately, and much less likely to have a reason for someone to say they didn't get something.
Right.
So.
And in this case, we put, um, not only did we do everything we were supposed to do as far as the mailing notice, we also posted it in locations in the city.
For sure.
Over and above, and.
And the paper.
For all the people that said they didn't, it, it was interesting to me, because we had people said they didn't get noticed, but they filed objections. So.
Right.
In response to the letter. So I, I, I think the notices got out and it worked. I think all 95, you know, we got some sort of connection.
I don't, yeah, and I don't, I'm not questioning that the city didn't do its due diligence, cuz I think we did, and we did above and beyond what we would even, I think, maybe have to do in some instances. Um, but I just want to make sure that we're covering our communication, because I feel like we're still gonna get, even with emails, we're still gonna get people that bounce back that way.
For sure.
But it's also a trackable way that we can literally say, I have this physical email address, this is what you've sent us, you're responsible for putting that email address into the system, this is on you for not having something that we can communicate to you with.
Yep, absolutely. We'll talk to Scott, see what we need to bring to you guys to change that.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then the last one, sorry, I was just, uh, on the city website, I'm wondering if it's possible, under the how-do-I section, to add a link for how do I, um, add a public comment? If we can just have a form that's for public comment in that section, that would, I think, be great, to not have to go search through departments to find it or anything else. Thank you. Round of applause from the office.
And I have a question. Um, the, so if somebody has a complaint or a concern about something, it's not just about vacation rentals. It could be anything, correct?
Yes, correct.
So I want the community to know, it's not just what happens in City Hall that people should be concerned about. We have other departments, we have subcontractors, we've got all of those things. And that should be brought up, because if, if we don't hear them, you know, people just need to speak up. If they have concerns or complaints or suggestions to make something better, you can use that for all of those kinds of things, throughout all of our city departments and contracts.
Right.
And to a fair point about that, I had a friend that traveled through an airport this week, and they went to, to compliment a TSA officer, and the only way to do anything on a website for TSA was to file a complaint. So they had to file a compliment on the complaint form. We love compliments. If you want to compliment any city staff member, any department head, any contractor that you see out there, we would gladly take compliments, some days, sheriffs, every, any, any entity that you would like to compliment, we will take them, please. You can use the exact same form. I know it says complaint, but compliments are welcome.
Maybe you should say complaint comments or something.
Yeah, I, yeah.
But I'd like to piggyback on that, too. And, um, I've requested it before, but I'm hoping that there's some way that people that do file a complaint or comment get some sort of resolve, or know what happened, uh, cuz I still have two people that keep bugging me, saying, I still haven't heard a thing. I still haven't heard a thing. So, just hoping that there's some way to be able to do that.
Yep.
Hey, oral communication. This is an opportunity for people to speak on items that are not on the agenda. You will be limited to two minutes, and no action will be taken.
Oh, two minutes, oh my goodness. Hello, Mayor, City Council, City Staff. Jenny Armstrong, 73, Gaviota. I'm the manager at the Catalina Island Yacht Club for the last seven years. And, um, I've, I've come to talk about and advocate for some sort of mitigation of speed, traffic, I don't even really know how to put this, in front of the club, and then as an aside, at the golf course. And I guess my first question is, do, does the city have jurisdiction over those roads? Um, am I here in vain, or is this something that I can address that might be?
Up to the casino, yes.
Pardon me?
From the, from the city to the casino is a city road.
Okay, um.
And how about, and how about going up to the golf course?
The golf course.
If you, if you turn up here and go up, is that ours, or is that island company?
That's island company.
It's, it's a similar, it's a similar problem. The problem that we're having, and I hate to be a complainer, but I do want to bring this publicly to your attention, because it has concerned me for quite some time, and I think it's become so dangerous for myself, my staff, my members, because we have to cross the road to get from the club to the parking and to the trash area. And also, if you park along the hillside between the club and the casino, you cannot access the sidewalk without walking back to the casino or all the way down the road to the yacht club. Um, you all know this. There's a horrible traffic problem there. Speeding is out of control, and the thing that is most concerning to me, and to a lot of us who, um, frequent that area, are the bicycles that are coming through at night quietly. I have video, and as a matter of fact, if you can disseminate that for me, just last night I was working, I went out to empty the trash at, at 9:34, and I could hear the bikes screaming out to the casino, and I knew they were coming back. So I ran and grabbed my camera, sat on the back of my golf cart, and sure enough, a couple of minutes later, and I have the video. These kids are coming by on electronic motorized bikes, no helmets, probably 30, 35 miles an hour. There's no posted speed limit, which I know wouldn't do anything, anyway. But I feel if I stepped down into the street and got hit by one of those bikes, I would be killed, and so would someone else. And it's concerning, cuz we have to, we have to cross the street there. As at the golf course, the bike's not such a big issue, just a lot of traffic driving very fast, and there is no, uh, nothing to indicate, like, there's pedestrians crossing here. Same thing down at the bathrooms, a little further into town. But I just feel like I want to make a public comment on this before somebody gets seriously injured. For some bizarre reason, I have, uh, a vision of a bike hitting a rock and going out of control and flying down onto the sidewalk and maybe hitting pedestrians walking. I would hate to see that happen in this community. I'm, I'm begging for someone to look into this and somehow mitigate, um, that, the speeding, the bikes, the motorcycles, the cars. The rental golf carts are not a problem. They all have governors, they're all going fairly slowly. But the speeding and the amount of traffic that that road was never constructed to handle is, it really does need to be dealt with. So I am urging you to look into this and make this a priority on, you know, the next time you're funding things like this. And I know that when you say, oh, I'm gonna put a speed bump in or mitigate the traffic, there's pros and cons to that. And I'm not talking about stopping with a horrible speed bump, maybe something soft, or just to slow the kids down, especially on the motorized bicycles, because somebody is gonna definitely get hurt there. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up that I see from the club are young people hanging out on the public dinghy dock between us and the tuna club. And it's become almost, um, sort of punkish behavior, where the kids are, I, I watch them, I see them from my office all day long. They're sort of standing on the ramp, they jump in the water, get wet, and then climb through the dinghies and get the dinghies wet. Um, you know, I'll sometimes call the harbor department if it's very blatant, um, and they'll come by and kind of shoe them off. But that's another thing that I wanted to bring to your attention, because I just don't think it, it makes the city, uh, look very good when you've got all the public coming through on those docks with the kids hanging out down there. So thank you very much. I appreciate you all being here, and, uh, thank you for listening to me.
I appreciate you coming out, and you might want to even send a copy of that video to, to the sheriff's department.
Oh, can you do that as well?
Yeah, yeah.
I would do that.
Yeah.
If you want to, I'll send you a copy, and if you can disseminate it, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny, for showing up. Is there anybody else? Oh, yes. That was two items, so I let her talk over two minutes, I'm sorry.
Okay, I have three items, but I'll keep it to two minutes. My name's Susanna Gutierrez, Savitt, 139 Whitley. My first, uh, item is I wanted to request a status update on the property at 2060 Whitley, either, um, a one-year plan on the outlook of the city's redevelopment of it, or a general plan consistency determination for any potential disposition of public property. Um, I've heard a lot of questions going around in town, just from the public. A lot of people have been asking me about it, people seeing private entities, uh, you know, looking around up there. And, um, I just think we could all use an update, um, especially as that ties into our arena allocation. That's gonna be my second requested agenda item. Um, I'd love it if you guys could have it as a discussion item this time, as opposed to a consent calendar item. The annual progress report this year for 2024, you guys certified it, there wasn't a lot of discussion following. Any of the policy implementation or the arena status progress for the numbers of units rehabilitated, conserved, or constructed. Um, and then the third one, uh, you guys kind of inspired me to request it, was a status update on the saturation levels of TRLs in town, um, the current levels. Uh, you know, you guys just revoked 90, that's great news, or close to 90, that's great news. Um, where were they? What blocks? You know, why were they revoked? Uh, love to get a report on complaints, follow-ups, if we have procedures for follow-ups. Uh, did planning commission see these red lines? Did they approve them? they approve them? Why is council approving the red lines if the Planning Commission is going to be issuing the permits? Thinking maybe the Planning Commission could recommend the entitlement to you guys, if you're the ones taking charge of these regulations, and establishing that kind of approval for criteria and performance standards, which I think should both be looked at separately. That's it.
Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. It is the summer discovery program time, the most important time of the year. Come and read over the summer, especially the kids. They've determined that kids' reading skills drop like stones if you don't read over the summer. I want kids to read, so I'm doing everything I can to do it. Right now, I left a bunch of kids making Uncle Sam puppets at the library. It looks kind of in paper bag things that go like that. Very nice. I think we've got a good crowd there. We're in the summer discovery program. Read three books, do three activities. Come on by, I've got a cart full of books and nice things to give you, some really great plastic toys, and some awesome books. Going to have an ice cream party. Come to the party, read a book. I'll give you a free ice cream, why not? I'm going to start, the next several Tuesdays, we're going to have a sort of summer discovery program craft. We're going to explore the strength of spider webs coming up this Thursday, color exploration, stick structures, making your own spider webs, all sorts of good stuff, with, with all sorts of, all the paper plates and strings and things like that. On August 1st, we're going to have a magician, Christopher T. Magician. Our storytimes continue on Saturdays at 11, and I've been making special appearances at Art in the Park, where I did a lovely storytime in the park. It was awesome. Let's see. I'm going to start a movie, coming up on Wednesday, July 16th at 6:00. I'm going to set up a little projector, and I've got, the library subscribes to a service called Canopy, which is sort of an online Netflix, and certain movies I can stream for the public without paying a license. So, we're going to do The Secret of Roan Inish, which is a beautiful Irish movie, set on an island, with mermaids and, and silkies and all sorts of fun stuff. Come to your library. Use me this summer. We're all here for you. We're going to have a great time. Come to the library.
Thank you, Paul. Anybody else? Okay, let's go to the consent calendar.
Okay, consent calendar. Item number one, approval of the minutes from June 17th, 2025 regular city council meeting. Item two, approval total expenditures for June 9th, 2025, through June 20th, 2025, totaling $1,766,641.23. Item three, authorize staff to issue a RFP to conduct sewer, saltwater, and solid waste rate studies to establish cost-based proportional utility rates for a five-year period, to provide adequate and sustainable funding for each utility's operational and capital needs. Item four is our annual law enforcement services agreement, rate, agreement with LA County Sheriff's Department. So, we're asking to adopt a resolution notifying Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors of the city's desire to receive the specified law enforcement service levels from LASD Office, authorizing expenditures of COPS grant funds, and authorize the city manager to execute the service level authorization form for fiscal year 2526. Item five, approve the revised plan as prevented, as presented for modifications and striping along Wrigley Road, including the four curves between the Pet Cemetery and Buena Vista Point.
I'll move to approve items one through five on consent.
Your second?
All second.
Okay, call for the vote.
All ayes.
General business?
General business, I believe we just have the one item tonight, and that is a request for a contract assignment for the semi-exclusive shoreboat franchise, shoreboat services and provider agreement, and the end float lease agreement amendment. This item comes to us at a request from the, the current shoreboat agreement holder to assign that agreement to Eric Mahan. And the intent is that the, the entity, the same corporate entity would transfer, be assigned to Eric, he would take it over. He's been partners in the shoreboat business for a period of time. I'm sure both Eric and Scott and Stacy are here, they can comment on this. And if you recall, a year and a half or so ago, we had a similar discussion, or a similar request to assign the shoreboat agreement to a group, I believe from San Diego at the time, and there was, I guess, a lack of comfort level, because there was no knowledge of that group. They hadn't been here, they hadn't operated. That's, that's different here. We don't have that lack of comfort level with Eric Mahan. We're very comfortable with him. We feel confident he can continue to operate this. The one concern we have, and we address it in this staff report, and that's being that originally, the shoreboat agreement, and then the end float lease, were two sep- were, they're two separate agreements, and, but they were held by the same individual, the same entity. So, we knew they were going to cooperate and work together. So, while they remain two separate documents, we feel it's important to recognize the need that they have to work with each other and continue to survive. So, that's why we're recommending that in addition to, if council approves the assignment of the shoreboat agreement, we would also ask for the amendments that we lay out to the lease, the existing end float lease agreement. Primarily modify the approved use to include operations conducted by the LSC, that being Scott Gorzalanco and Stacy operating their jet ski business, which is already existing. Then, it would be to continue and require the shoreboat operations to be allowed on that end float. That's very important for harbor operations, so that can't be closed off now that we have two separate entities. So, that would have to main, be maintained. And I would point out that the original agreement, as these two were, were entered, provided that end float to, to basically subsidize, so the shoreboat could use that, keep it off the harbor floats, keep congestion open, and be able to use that end float. So, we want that to continue. We want that to continue without restriction, and that's the intent of this. And, and while everybody's getting along now, that's great, but if these entities change and personnel change, we want to make sure that the documents support continuing operations. And then, if there's any other request for subletting off of that end float, we want that coming back to the city, so we can have a, at least be able to chime in and have an opinion on that, of whether or not it serves the need. So, so that's the intent of this. I know everybody else is here, if they have comments on it. Are there any questions so far of the staff report?
Any questions or any comments you would like to make, either you, Eric, or Scott, or Stacy?
Well, good evening. Well, first and foremost, I want to just say thank you for allowing us to have the contract for eight years. It's been a pleasure and an honor to service the harbor, you know, the harbor department with the shore taxi service. It's been a lot of fun. I'm just getting to a point where I just have other opportunities coming up, and need to fulfill that time. So, but if you have any questions for me, I just wanted to first say thank you.
Welcome. Eric, comment? Would you like to say anything?
Yeah, I'm, just coming up, the shoreboat opportunity wasn't something that I saw happening, you know, a couple of years ago, when I was coming back over to the island and stuff. It just kind of keeps, I call it the snowball effect. Once you get into one thing, it just seems to open up more and more doors. And so, this door has opened up. It seems to be an easy opportunity and stuff, to continue what I'm already doing out here, and just really excited to move forward with it and stuff. And give Scott a break, so he can go focus other places, too. And I've been up and mostly operating it this year to begin with, and then was overseeing it with him all last year, doing boat operations, the mechanic operations, yearly maintenance, and all the behind-the-scenes stuff. That does not ever stop when you're an owner of a business. And I have any questions from you guys, or anything like that, or?
Wish you a lot of luck, and you took a little something off of his plate, but then he always puts something back on his plate.
It's even more plates he has.
Excellent, and good, congratulations. Don't need to say good luck, it's going to be very successful. Okay, if there's nothing else, happy Fourth of July.
We have to, like, make a motion and vote.
We have to act on it.
Oh, hell, why?
I'll make a motion.
We were just so happy.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the request to assign the remaining term of the semi-exclusive shoreboat franchise and shoreboat services provider agreement, and Avalon Shoreboat Service Corporation to Eric Mahan, authorized Catalina Jet Ski Corporation to sublease the end float to Avalon Shoreboat Service Corporation. Authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the end float lease agreement with Catalina Jet Ski Corporation, modifying the intended use, as well as mandating space to be provided to the holder of the city of Avalon semi-exclusive shoreboat franchise and shoreboat services provider agreement.
All second.
Did you get whoever? Okay, call for the vote. Snow. Meeting adjourned.
Happy Fourth of July.